Good evening, everybody. Good evening. We're about to start the streaming. Just so you know, before we start the meeting, we start the streaming and if you're talking about your microphones may pick up comments that you make, so don't get caught with an open mic.
Was people in the hall?
Yeah.
We couldn't hear anything.
You can't. That's why we have Betsy. How's that? Is that working?
Much better.
That's much better. Okay. I'll make sure that...
Not enough.
Not enough? How's that? You want to sit closer? Yeah, there's four open seats in the front. Don't be afraid.
No extra chairs.
We actually don't have seats in the front, but we just move them up there so people don't think they're sitting at the front. Really, the front row starts back there. Funny how that is with everybody. Nobody wants to sit in the... You want to sit in the front, though.
Yes, because...
Okay. There we go. Okay. I will call the Southbury Board of Selectmen regular meeting August 14, 2025, to order at 7:00 PM here in room 205A in Southbury. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody wants to sit up front.
Mr. First Selectman, I'd like to make a motion to adjust the agenda to move item I-1, the four-day work week pilot program, to the top of the agenda, so we don't have to make everyone wait all afternoon. Have the discussion about it, then recess into public comment to hear what the public has to say, then return from that to vote.
I'll take a second on that motion.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We will take on unfinished business. I-1, the four-day work week program. Go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Ms. First Selectman. And I imagine most of you are here for that agenda item, so we'll get right to it. A few months ago, when we launched into a pilot program, we wanted to learn what government would look like, working with allowing our town employees here in Town Hall and over the Senior Center, how that would look. And we wanted to learn some information during this summer time. And I think we've learned a lot of information. And I think, and I might be, you know, some people might look at me sideways, but I think the pilot program was a huge success in many ways. Here in Town Hall, this building ourselves, didn't really hear much about anything. Everything continued as it normally would, and I think here it had happened without any ill repercussions. Parking lot over at the Senior Center, a little different. Some things we learned in the pilot program for the Senior Center. One, that there is a strong appetite for some classes later in the afternoons during the week for seniors who still may be working, can't get to an 11 o'clock class. We saw that with the three programs that are opened up, almost immediately filled up. In the meantime, enrollment at the Senior Center has increased. I think that's a win for the pilot program. We also learned that there's a strong desire to be open on Fridays. And I think that bit of information we learned as well is important to bring in. It's our job as elected officials, public servants, to listen to our bosses. So I think that there's a path forward that doubles down on the extended hours during the week and returns the Senior Center back to having its Friday hours. And I look forward to entertaining that discussion here now, and I know you have some more details, since you're the guys that have to make it happen. But I think, I think tonight, we can leave here with the understanding that we're going to take all of the information we learned over the past few months to make a solution that keeps the later afternoon seniors happy during the week and the folks who really enjoyed the Friday, make them happy as well. So I look forward to that discussion here.
So if I can, I appreciate that, Jason. You're also the liaison to the Senior Center, and I appreciate the work you've done on it. And I will agree, there is success in the program. One of my challenges to the Senior Services Director was that if we're open later, can we attract a different group of seniors, perhaps even myself being a 67-year-old, to classes that would attract more of the seniors to the center? And frankly, it has done that. With that, I echo that it was a pilot program. We want to know how it would work, what it would look like, and I, you know, never committed to a four-day work week. It was a pilot program to see how it would lay out. Because sometimes your thought process, you think something's going to work a certain way, but it's, it doesn't. So in discussing with some of, with Jason and others, but also with our, with our Finance Director, we do have money in the budget. There is a spot for Economic Development Director position for 10 hours a week. We've come to the conclusion that a full-time, 35-hour-a-week Economic Development Director, expanding the grand list, had not accomplished. But there is still a desire in that 10, in that time, there's still a desire by the business community to have some sort of a liaison and someone, some hours available for economic development and working with our businesses. So there's also a need, we did have a position that was removed by the Board of Finance that was a second floater. With the floater, my idea is, we, I talked to Dan, we probably could find enough money in the budget and enough, and the Board of Finance had also said that they would reinstate a position if we came up with a need and what they would do. So what I would suggest is that the Board of Selectmen ask the Board of Finance to reinstate a floater position for community engagement, which would mean they could be there on Friday at the Senior Center for programs to open it up and have someone in the community center at that time, also making it possible to do some engagement with the business community. And frankly, backstop, should there, someone, we always, we have someone who, if there's someone out on FMLA or medical, or they had an extra program going on, they needed another person, they would be available for that, over there for that. So that's my idea. It would allow us to keep our expanded hours for the seniors during the week that would service them, because it's been successful. And I'd hate to cut that back because it was successful. I know there's others that are considering joining because of those hours. But it'll also actually end up expanding the service to the senior community and have a person available. That would part, it would be, we would have to work the hours out and the, it would probably be more flexible hours. It may not be that person, I'll work on that from an HR perspective, maybe they're not there on Mondays. It would be a 35-hour-a-week person, and that would give the flexibility to enhance a lot more down there. The thought, do anybody have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, lots of thoughts. So, you know, I've spoken with Jeff about this. I mean, we've read...
Could you put your microphones closer to your mouths?
Sure.
We can't hear you, because the microphones are not close.
Understood. So I've spoken with Jeff about this. We've read every email, every, every person that's come forwarding in public comment, and there's a lot of really good thoughts. And on the flip side, there's also a lot of people who have spoken up saying that they've, for the first time, had access to Town Hall later in the day. So my background, before I was a Selectman, I worked in Brookfield, nine to five. If I ever had town business to do, it was impossible for me to get here while the building was open without taking time off from my job to be able to come here, because my work hours mirrored Town Hall, and it was not possible. So now that there is a later night during the week, we're getting really great feedback from working people that they're actually able to come, pay their taxes, ask a question, be able to do those things. And I think what, now with the potential of having a later evening with the Senior Center, there are still working seniors that would now have access to a class where they normally wouldn't have been able to always get there during the hours that existed. So I think this is a really good balance where we've learned from what we've heard over several months. We've adjusted to it and found a solution that can make all things possible for all the needs of the community. And I think that's what this has really been about, with it being a pilot program, is to find areas. And, you know, there's been some folks in public comment that have come up with suggestions on rotating or floating hours, and we've heard all of that and heard how we can make that work. So I just, I'm really excited about the potential to not just offer the Fridays back, but now we found a solution where we're offering more to the whole community, for working people, for retired folks, for everybody, and finding balance to make it work for everybody. So I'm really eager to see how we make this a reality.
Yeah, well, just the first I'm hearing about hiring a new person, so I'd need to learn a little bit more about that. I was not at our last meeting. I was out of the country with my, with my family. But I got to tell you, across the board, I think a four-and-a-half-day work week is already a nice thing. I know, I don't, I've never benefited from such a thing, and I think a lot of people wonder, that work five or six days a week, why four and a half isn't good enough. So I'm a proponent for everything being open on Friday in the morning, but I'm happy to hear about other ideas and ways you can do that. There may be a way where you could have people work a four-day work week and still be open till noon on Friday. So anything you guys want to look at, I'm game, but I need some more detail.
Tim?
I think it's a, I think it's a great proposal, first I'm hearing of it myself, obviously with the amount of people that are here. There's a number of seniors that do want Friday opened at the Senior Center. I think there's a lot that goes on in Town Hall, too, on Fridays, as far as closings and filings and everything else. So I also would like to see the town offices opened up for the five days. Some people did say a flex schedule would benefit, where somebody from the Senior Center would stay on for a Friday, and then the next people would be off. I think that could be something that's an option. But I definitely think that it should be open on Friday.
The Senior Center?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I think extending the hours during the week is a good thing also.
I'm going to say it. So I appreciate the fact that we're looking at a floater position, but I think that floater position should be dedicated to the Senior Center, so that there's no misunderstanding that, oh, we have to put the floater in a different position, so we can't have that day open with the Senior Center. I don't think that would happen. I'm not sure about the mixing the EDC with the floater position. Might be diluting the position, the EDC 10 hours or whatever it was. I think we should really ask for a floater for senior services, parks and rec, whatever, however, we have to manipulate that. But I like the idea of the floater position, so that we can't have five days at the Senior Center.
Well, the floater would be so that the, on Friday, the Senior Center would be open as usual, filling that position. But we'll also backstop to other, the floater, the floater's admin positions that we've been using have been an extremely successful tool for the municipality, for the town. Let me give you some background on that. We have, the person who is in our building department, started as a floater, understood how everything worked up in the building department and also in Land use, and had worked in the town clerks. When the position opened due to retirement, they really liked that, and they settled right into the position. The good thing on, with that is, we're breaking down silos by having an individual who understands the other departments they work with. And it has worked so that if there's a need in another department, they can pretty fluently help that department get by when we have that. Like, let's say there was a need for a program at the Senior Center, and they needed extra help. They don't need someone all the time, but they just need extra help. They would put that request in, as Park and Rec would put a request in, or as the town clerk would put the request in, and they're able to serve the public in a productive manner because they have worked in that department. It also makes it so that, we recently had a floater who did a lot of work in, in the town, in town clerk, also in tax office, and also in the assessor's office. And when the position opened up in Finance, it was a perfect fit. So that position, they went into Finance, they were fluent, they understood a lot of what went on. And when tax time comes around, and we have a lot of people, they are able to cover and add to that need at that time. When taxes are done and over, they go back to Finance and keep the Finance Department up and running. Same thing with the town clerk. It's really not productive when you have a supervisor trying to get work done and also teach while the work is not getting done. By having that person have some knowledge of it, they're very easily, they can keep it, keep it going. So we have, we do have, we have had, in the past, we have had FMLA, people out on FMLA, they're allowed a certain number, and it, and then it becomes difficult to put somebody in there, and it could be eight weeks, 10 weeks, depending on what FMLA. We've had maternity. We're one of the very progressive municipality that offers maternity leave. We've had two people go on maternity leave, and the individual that was trained, and part of what we do is take the floater, when there is no need in a department, we ask them to work with that department, so they understand it. And then we ask them when, if that person should not be there for vacation, or FMLA, or maternity, there's, there's still production, they're still able to do the job. It also has broken down a lot of silos where our employees interact with each department with an understanding of how all these departments work, which government really all ties back together. It's led to successful implementation of software for the building department, and it was working good enough. We don't always need as many people in a department, depending on Park and Rec, that could be at, let's say, summer camp, where the, all hands on deck because of the time, and they might backstop that. They would still be in the building. There are programs that Senior Center puts on, let's say, there's a special Thanksgiving luncheon or a holiday party where you need extra help, that person will go over and help with, Park and Rec with that, or the Senior Center with that, to service that at that time. So it's worked out really well. My proposal is that the Board of Selectmen, we would have to work with Finance and come up with a proposal for the Board of Finance, because they would have to appropriate, and we'd have to transfer some money, and we'd have to get that, to reinstate the floater position. And then that, one thing that has, does happen is, when there is a floater that is working under my office, what I always ask is, what is the task, how long will it take, and when will it be done? And we do that more so that we know what they're doing, we know what they have been trained on, we know that it's not all of a sudden a permanent fixture in that, that area, and to train them. This will give us the ability to keep the, what we, what has been, I also believe, a successful pilot program that showed the need for extra programming in the evening and extended hours in the Senior Center, and give us the ability to keep open on Friday till 1:00, like we were. So I think that's the idea. I think the Board of Finance would be open to this, because it's requested by the Board of Selectmen, and there is money in the budget. I don't, I think we could find with the 10 hours of EDC, and that will, you know, if a person is down there, there's going to be times where they are, can't answer the questions and the EDC work. There's enough work to also do that.
Another comment on that. One of the concerns that I had when the EDC position was put at only 10, I said, where are we going to find somebody that's only looking to work 10 hours a week? And the reality is, that position hasn't been filled with only 10 hours available. By doing this, we are serving the needs of multiple departments. We're able to have somebody at the Senior Center, we're able to have those 10 hours a week committed to the EDC and keep that job moving. So I think this is really one of those tremendous opportunities to really satisfy multiple needs of the town, and I think it's something that we should try.
I think the positive side of this also is, or with the Board of Finance, I believe our Finance, our Finance Director has, truly knows the success of a floater and what we've been able to do with it, and how they have then, you know, it's funny, some people think they want to work in a certain department, and then they find that they really like this other department. I never thought to work in the tax assessor, I never thought to work in town clerk, which has led to good employee morale, because they are in a job position that they like, you know, and I think that's, we certainly, when we would look to fill this position and go out, the focus of the applicants in the interviews would be serving in the community, which is the Senior Center, Park and Rec. You would focus that kind of, trying to find that person, and I think we could, we could do that. And I think we can expand our services to everyone.
And that, thank you, First Selectman. And that kind of segues, we've talked a lot of other departments here, and I don't want to, I don't want to lose the purpose, the, from my consideration, the primary purpose of this floater is to handle the Senior Center. So while there are opportunities in government to pull this floater to go do something else, that's not going to happen on Friday mornings. You're not going to walk to a locked door and be like, oh, they're in, you know, assessors today. That's not going to happen. The goal of this plan is to have this personnel make sure we're open on Fridays and to supplement the later afternoon hours during the week. That's not a 40-hour or 35-hour-a-week job. So when we first started talking about this, I had envisioned a 15 to 20-hour person, but my colleagues rightly said, I think we can probably, for a few more incremental dollars, get a more committed and driven candidate, if you get them to kind of a larger role, hourly-wise, some benefits. So I don't want anyone to get lost and think that this person's doing something else. This is your person first, and will also allow us to help in some other departments when they're not taking care of the Senior Center. I didn't want that to get lost.
So someone asked, someone asked, well, how would this per, you know, there's always, just so you know, from, you know, some people are like, well, what does a floater do? I mean, and I've had applicants come in, and they're like, well, I don't really have a home. Yes, you do. You have no idea how important this position is and what you do. Because of the technology that we've implemented during this administration, one of the big ones, if you remember the new phone system? So if a person was to be, let's just say, I or my staff were to go down to the Senior Center to make sure it was open, make sure things were going, how do they communicate? Should they also be doing some of the work for my office? How do you reach them? It's amazing, all you have to do is take your phone. It's, the system allows you to work from anywhere, so you don't lose that continuity, like the phone rings and, well, there's nobody answering the phone because I was at the Senior Center. They would actually have the ability to still answer a phone should a call come in for something else that they're involved with. So the, you know, I want the, something that should be explained to the, to the public should understand, technology has made productivity a lot better. We don't get that because of these phones and systems we have. So when you say, well, what's, will they be working on economic development? Well, they could be at the Senior Center on Friday, and helping the, you keep the door open and taking care of that day, doesn't mean that if something was to say, call and say, well, I'll call you on Friday then, the phone would ring. Their phone would be there for them to answer and say, yes, okay, that's going to go through, yep, thank you very much, and they would have that. So the technology is giving us a lot of flexibility to make these, these positions and make these moves.
Let's be realistic. It's, a floater is not going to make up for Kevin Bealmeyer not being our Economic Development Director. It was unfortunate how he was let go at the town. If you're proposing a floater for the Senior Center position, so it's open on Friday, we can talk about that, but there's other things in the Town Hall that need to get done. There's closings, there's people in assessors, there's people that come to the town clerk for a number of things. I, I just don't think a floater is going to cover everything that, that the Economic Development Director took, had, had for responsibilities. And if half of those hours are going to the Senior Center Director, that's another five hours for the week. My opinion, we need to get another Economic Development Director. I think Kevin did a great job, and it's unfortunate that he's gone.
I just want to clarify, the town didn't let our EDC Director go. Our EDC Director resigned. The hours were reduced by the Board of Finance, not the Board of Selectmen. But there was no termination, there was a resignation, and I think it's very important that that's clear.
Yeah, it's...
And, go ahead.
Out of respect for everyone that's in the audience here, I think maybe our discussion, we can continue back to our regular agenda and then come back to the discussion, so we can hear what the public have to say, if that would be okay? So I'd make a motion to return to the regular agenda right now, to public comment?
Don't we need to finish this agenda item?
No. The original motion to add this was to pause, so I guess the motion would be to postpone this item for further discussion till after public comment.
Till after public comment. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it carries. So next, we have public comment. So next, we have public comment. If anybody would like to make a public comment, please state your name and address in the microphone. Make sure turn is on in green and you can make the po- com- public comment and we'd like to hear from you if you'd like to make, especially after digesting what the idea is.
Diane Antezo, 194 North Georges Hill Road. I'm not going to read this. I'm very pleased that you've heard people's opinions and I just wanted clarification sometime that when you're talking about the senior center being open on Fridays, that that includes the senior transportation and what does, does that mean the sen- uh, the transportation coordinator also will be there on Fridays? So that was just my only question, but I'm very pleased and relieved and glad, um, I hope this is over and I hope everybody is happy.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Could, could, if we're going to make, could we, we were asking if we could, um, like to move, honestly, to move it along, if people could get up and get ready to, in line? Would that be okay?
The head in line.
Lori's at the head of the line.
Lori Grabowski, 33 Old Field Hill Road. Um, thank you, Ann. All right. Just briefly, I am a businesswoman in town. I think town halls should be open five days a week, whatever those hours are. That's all. And I do support making senior activities readily available evenings and daytime.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Eric Olson. Can you all hear me?
Uh, it's on. Uh, good evening. My name is Eric Olson. My wife Kathy is here to join me and I am speaking in favor of completing the pilot program four days a week, for extended days a week for the senior center and certainly for the senior center staff. Um, I, I, I fully agree with what you're doing and I, I don't want to speak for the senior center, everybody there. But I do recall from the June 25th meeting that the first selectman requested that the Board of Selectmen take the opportunity to observe the daily operations at the senior center. I took the liberty of doing that and I've been doing that for the last couple of weeks, not necessarily getting in the way, but being a fly on the wall. And it was very interesting because in my mind, um, and I know money is always the issue because it's both money and people. We all know that the budget has been frozen for the senior center and senior services, all of them, including transportation at $383,000 since 2023. And we all, we all recognize that there's inflation and that buying power has been reduced by seven percent since 2023. We have, uh, a thousand members, people, almost a thousand members, as Jeff mentioned, um, in the senior center. And you have to remember that those thousand people ages 60 and 99 are pretty unique bunch. Frankly, every one of them can be different. And it's important that we realize that the senior center employees and staff initiate and maintain these diverse programs of which there are over 100. And then there are additional programs that are offered every month on the order of 10. And presently, the staff is now three and a half employees and with a part-time social worker, all of whom I had a chance to speak with and I would, I guess, take Jeff's recommendation that the board do that themselves. I mean, we have employees like Ann at the front desk who serves all the problems and she's the one that helps to write, in fact, writes and edits the entire newsletter that goes out with the schedule. She also is now, because of the part-time role of the transportation coordinator, takes all of the transportation coordination after 2:30 in the afternoon, in addition to everything else. I'm going to go to the transportation because that was a good suggestion. Brenda is our.
I have to limit you to two minutes. Could you supply that comment to the board, uh, in an email, please?
I just want to make sure that we recognize the extraordinary imaginative and dedicated senior center employees who frankly are disenchanted right at the moment. I would say demoralized based on some of the conversations, some of the writing and some of the comments that have been made.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Next up, I'm sorry, we're in public comment.
Can I make a motion to extend the hours to public comment? This is an important topic and I'd like to hear from everybody in the public.
We've got to get a number of the public through. We don't know how many, so it's a two minute. Judy?
Hi, hello. My name is Judy Leopard and I live at 250 Ichabod Road, resident and taxpayer of Southbury since 99, 1996 and Pomprog graduate, Pomprog High School graduate. I won't tell you what year. I believe strongly that all town offices should be open at least a half day on Friday. I don't think asking a town employee to work four hours on a Friday is asking a lot. Uh, probably most of them live locally and get, can get home quickly. And I think, um, they, we as taxpayers are customers. And I think sometimes the people that work for the town forget that. They are here to service us. We are customers because we are taxpayers and without the taxpayers, they wouldn't have jobs. And I think a lot of times in all towns, not just Southbury people, forget that. My real reason was the, the senior center. Loneliness and social isolation are significant issues for seniors impacting physical and mental health caused by death of loved ones, their husbands, their friends, their family. All residents and taxpayers should be treated equally in town. If the senior center is only open for four days, then parks and recs should only be open for four days. Is one group more important than the other? Are we saying that children are important, so parks and recs has to be open five days, but seniors aren't? If the decision makers decide that the senior center will only be open four days, they should be open all day on Friday and they should be closed on Wednesday. Why do I say this? Because the, the seniors that are at risk would not have to be alone all day Friday, all day Saturday, and all day Sunday. Thank you very much and thank you for everything you do for our town.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Monica Polano and I live at, uh, 563 Poverty. I'm speaking in favor of retaining a five-day week at the senior center. Many of your constituents are seniors and more become so every day. Research shows that seniors who engage in socialization and exercise live better and longer lives. The loneliest time for many seniors is the weekend. With Friday closings, our weekends will extend to three, four, or possibly five days when holiday closings and special events are planned on Thursday. I understand that the wonderful staff of Ann, Kathy, and Andrea would like a, a three-day weekend, but services to their clientele must take precedence. I favor the floater idea as a compromise, but I believe that that floater should have 10 hours dedicated to the senior center. And I appreciate Jason kind of pushing for that too. I thank you for voting on this issue with your constituents in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. You, you can get up in line too. Go ahead. No, yeah.
Um, I, I don't agree with the senior center being closed Fridays because it means people that don't drive like myself will be without transportation for three, four, or maybe even five days. The senior center is also a wonderful place, uh, for us to socialize, which is very important as we age. I think the senior center should be open a full day on Friday.
Thank you.
You did great.
You did great. We're not bad. We're not bad. We're not bad.
I'm Iris Fontaine, 919B Heritage Village, and I'm pretty much going to say the same as Jill. The senior, um, center and the bus are essential to the residents of the town of Southbury. Loneliness, social isolation are significant issues for seniors, whether they're in their own home or in a congregate, um, living arrangement because you can be very lonely if you're in your condo by yourself for four days when there's no way of getting out. Many families are not nearby. They used to be and they would come and visit. Uh, there are many ways I know to make contact, but most seniors are not very savvy electronically, so they can't make use of them. People need to be with other people. Closing the senior center on Friday will leave many people alone for three days or even four. We need to rethink this. I had to stop driving and I'm without a vehicle now and I know how hard it is.
Thank you.
Joe Chapman, 1554 Georges Hill. I have some considerable experience working with several different municipalities over a few decades, so I've seen both sides of the argument here. Um, I can tell you from personal experience that having evening hours available to the taxpayers of a great benefit to many of them. I've spent well over a year at one point during the COVID epidemic in working until sometimes 7:30, 8 o'clock at night, dealing with people over the phone, and they were all very appreciative of the fact that they could actually reach somebody and talk to them and solve their issues or at least point them in the right direction. I'm also in favor of having the floater position approved and if a five-hour slot was dedicated to having the senior center open on Fridays, I'm also in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Francesca Surjy, 171 Lakewood Road, Southbury, Connecticut. Um, the senior center is used multiple times a week for exercise, socialization, transportation, attending programs, learning new things, recreation, hobbies, expert assistance. Exercise and socialization and learning are key to living a healthy, fulfilled life as noted in the Blue Zones and other aging reports. I would hope that in addition to wanting this for yourselves and your staff, that you would also want it for everyone that you serve. I believe that need is to increase, not continue to decrease, the days of the senior centers open. I've noticed because so many of the classes are scheduled in the morning, parking has been a serious problem. Overflow parking has been forced to use the elementary school parking lot. That part, parking lot's not going to be available in September. So if you have this floater, then you're going to need to reschedule back to the other programs because it's too tight when you're cramming it in. Um, I'm totally for this floater, but if you choose not to go that route, then I think this crucial decision should be put to a public vote. I've already heard from the residents, I've already heard from residents who have signed up for other senior centers like Newtown and Woodbury because they're very frustrated with Southbury. When the word spreads that Southbury Senior Center is not well-regarded, it could ultimately affect our town's reputation and even our housing market. If the staff must have a half a day, then split it, maybe some take half a day Monday and then some take the half a day Friday. The senior center needs to be open on Friday is the bottom line. All other towns do this. We should be considerate of our seniors. We need a solution that works for the staff and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy?
I'm Deborah Brody. I live at 218B in Heritage Village. Um, I very appreciate all the comments that have come so far. I think the idea to have extended hours for the town hall and also have the senior center open on Friday is a very good idea and I'm in favor of it. I just have one thing to say about floaters. I'm a registered nurse. I worked on the floor and as a floater at Middlesex Hospital in Middletown, Connecticut. And I can tell you that if I was floating to the surgical floor and somebody on the medical floor called me and said, hey, uh, there's a patient here that needs your attention, I would go crazy. So please don't have your floater be fielding phone calls from his other station while he's at whatever station he or she is at. And also I think that there is a certain need for matching of skillsets with the requirements of the work to be done. So anyone who would be serving in the senior center, I hope that they will be appropriately trained and qualified to, uh, help people in the senior population and that that is their focus while they're there and they're not fielding calls from someplace else. Thank you all very much.
Hi, my name is Heidi Kozakowski. I live at 50 Lakewood Road and I want to say thank you for reading, listening to us. I agree with a floater position in order to keep it open. I agree with keeping town hall open later hours. I want to take this opportunity to, uh, thank the senior center staff because they do such a variety of, of things in their jobs. And, um, I think taking, uh, not filling that floater position from last November has created more work on them and they deserve to be applauded because they have taken on more and I think they need to be recognized for that. And thank you again for, for listening to our needs.
Thank you. Good evening. Anybody else like to speak?
My name, my name's Kate Clark. I live at 35 Pine Hill Road. My husband and I have been there for 30 years. And, um, I feel a little out of place because I came here to talk about affordable housing, but I do want to say I'm in favor of, uh, keeping the senior center open on Friday afternoon, on Fridays, at least half a day. As far as the affordable housing goes, um, I'm just here to, um, encourage the, the Board of Selectmen to, um, move forward with the, um, the survey and the environmental, uh, impact survey, to, to move forward on the affordable housing, uh, on behalf of seniors like my husband and I, who would like to stay in Southbury and, um, and, you know, workers and others who would benefit from the affordable housing. So that, that was really all I had to say tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, Claudia Chapman.
Oh, Claudia.
Georges Hill Road. I went to a program the other night in Woodbury at six o'clock. It was largely attended by seniors. It was a wonderful open mic poetry reading, very well attended, very well received and very well loved in the community. Not all seniors are early birds. Lots of us work, my husband included. Um, I'd like to see extended hours for the senior center, consult with places like Woodbury that have far more programs than we do and offer a different variety and also serve the older, or the night owls among us. I also agree that there have been demeaning comments about municipal workers and that concerns me. Their job is to keep things running. Referring to them as servants is kind of an old-fashioned way of looking at things. I think they should be treated with respect and I think other portions of the senior population should be looked to for what we want in terms of programs. It doesn't seem like the senior center has to be closed on Friday. And I also respect the idea that lots of people thrive and have good work, home life balance with a four-day week. I've seen it work in other places. I think that comes in with respecting our municipal employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good night.
Hello.
Hello.
Nice to see you again.
Likewise. Thank you. I'll keep it.
One of our top attenders.
Okay. Well, this evening I have a question about the, uh, charter revision, uh, statement about affordable housing and some news from the planning commission last night, very exciting news, I think. exciting news, I think. Oh, okay. A question, a statement, and exciting news from the Planning Commission last night. Okay. My question about the Charter Revision Committee is why did they repeal the Public Appeals Board regarding personnel, as well as why did they repeal the Strategic Plan Commission? About affordable housing, I'm hoping that you and the Planning Commission work with Alexandra Gittiness, Chair of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, to host an educational forum. She is planning about the newly enacted Southbury Land Conveyance Legislation. The Subcommittee hopes that this forum will draw an audience of developers, realtors, bankers, and Southbury residents to explain the legislation, which provides market rate and affordable housing on the 45-acre parcel across from the Southbury Training School. And my good news is last night, the Planning Commission approved the construction of a 99-seat theater adjacent to Prime Publishers, the Prime Publishers Building on Heritage Road. It's an exciting accomplishment for the arts in the town. I emailed a photo of the rendering to Betsy. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Zeiss, 656A Heritage Village, and I've also come to speak with you about affordable housing. I'm asking the Board to act without delay in undertaking the state's requirement of conducting a land survey and environmental impact study on the 45-acre land parcel at Southbury Training School that the state gifted the town at the end of the last legislative session. According to a CBIA study, the economic costs of Connecticut's housing shortage manifest across multiple dimensions: reduced workforce availability as potential employees are priced out of job centers, increased business operating costs, suppressed consumer spending as housing costs consume larger portions of household budgets, and diminished economic mobility that threatens future growth. These economic inefficiencies compound over time, creating impediments to Connecticut's competitiveness in the regional and national economy. Once the town completes the necessary studies, the state will turn this parcel over to the town, so that the town may request bids to sell the land to a third-party developer for development. This will add money to the town's coffers, offsetting some of the burden of running the town that would ordinarily be paid through our property taxes. Plus, once developed, the town will benefit from the increased property taxes that the owners are now paying for their new homes. All in all, it's a win-win for the town of Southbury, but we must act quickly to get the ball rolling. In my opinion, it's selfish for those of us who have homes to deny those of us who don't. Thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Donna Smith. I'm at 35 Lee Farm Drive in Southbury. I have this. I can't read it, so I'm just winging it. I appreciate your compromises and your talk of other ways to handle the senior center and town hall. I just wanted to recognize that, to me, town hall is different from the senior center, because it's where you go to do your town business. You're in and out. You've got different departments. You're not there for exercise and to socialize. It's a different animal. I could see that being more four days and longer hours for the working people. The senior center, I've never been an elder person before. It's all new. Kind of sucks. You know, my body's betraying me. We're still encouraged to exercise and maintain a social life, excuse me, and we're told it will help, excuse me, fill the void of our lost jobs, lost loved ones, and lost abilities, all with the goal of preventing loneliness and depression. And we are social animals. The senior center is very important. The other thing I wanted to mention was perhaps the way this pilot was presented to the seniors, it felt like COVID all over again. We're starting our class. Andrea and the staff come in and say, "Oh, we have wonderful news. We're taking Friday off, or we're getting Friday off, but we'll have extended hours." And that was kind of it. So I think that allowed for a lot of, a lot of thinking, stinking thinking, going on, because we didn't know what was going on. And I frequently think if someone had put something in the prior newsletter, giving us a clue as to why, how they were feeling, what might be coming, how do we feel about it, put out a suggestion box, I just felt very discounted and disrespected as a senior, and this is our senior center, that we're paying our fees to, paying our taxes, and we're supporting them with our presence every day. And I do appreciate the staff. I know they work very hard, but I think the way this was done kind of put us at odds with each other, because they had this, and we didn't know what that was.
I have only a minute to two minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm back again. I just wanted to say one thing about the parcel. It's free real estate.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. The parcel at Southbury Training School, it's free real estate. I don't see any need to delay on taking advantage of it. Thank you.
Take your time.
First off, I'm not quite sure what the rationale was for the four-day week. And if it was to save money, I understand that. I live in Heritage Village. Everything we do or change is to save money. But according to what I read today about the meeting tonight and the agenda, Mr. Manville said it was not a cost savings. So that eliminated one of the things I was sure of. And secondly, the fact that the staff is delighted with a three-day weekend. I think everybody in manufacturing or the trades would love a three-day weekend, whether paid or not is beside the point. But, and I'm sad for the seniors that obviously have one more day to stay home and think about what they'd like to do. But my issue more is about the van, the senior van. I don't drive, and for probably 10, 12, 14 years, I depended on the village van for transportation. Convenient, they're right there, you live there, take you anywhere, including activities at the village, which the senior van does not take us to anything in the village. That's taboo. But in any case, the senior van, I'm sure everybody has heard in town, the village eliminated it. And that was definitely a cost savings, so that we depended then on the senior van, which has certainly filled some of the gap. And I have to really give Brenda, who is the dispatcher, or whatever her official title is for transportation, she is so pleasant, and yet I'm so sure she's stressed, because who's calling, who's changing, who's canceling? Who, oh my God, I can't go tomorrow. What do you mean, I can't go tomorrow? I had a book in eight days in advance.
You've used, you've been two minutes.
But there is a schedule that has to be followed.
Thank you.
And she does. Oh, you don't want to see me fall. I just thought I could have just.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think that also tells me, sit down. And you get my issue. It's the senior van.
Thank you.
That I rely on. And not always does the van schedule and my medical appointments coincide, and adding more hours early in the morning doesn't help. I don't know of any doctors that will take you at 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning, which is where the extra hours were added, so I don't fall.
Yes, sir.
I'm Vincent Antezzo, 194 North Georges Hill Road. Just wanted to thank the Board for considering the option. I'm a senior myself, but I work full-time, so I'm not a member of the center yet. But I do plan to join when I retire. And I want to thank the Board for looking at that creative solution of adding the floater. I think that's a great idea, and just hope you go forward with it. Thank you.
Please join now. It's inexpensive, and there's programs, believe me.
Oh, I know, but I work too late.
Any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? We're going to close that portion of our agenda, and we'll move on to announcements and correspondence. You have it in your packet. Oh, you want to go? Okay. Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. I want to, I keep moving things along. So we're taking backup I on the four-day-week pilot program. I think, again, I think we've heard from the public, and I want to remind everybody that it was a pilot program. I do want to remind everybody that when it comes to transportation, we are running a large number of transportation vehicles, probably more than, I know more than Newtown. Newtown only has one. But I think, and the pilot program has served its purpose, which was to understand how this would affect and what it would be. And yes, there is some desire to make sure a working environment and keeping up with, you know, we're one of, as I said, we're one of the few municipalities that have maternity leave. And I think most women understand how important that is, that there is maternity leave. We are one of the first, if not the only municipality in the state of Connecticut to offer maternity leave. And I would not compare that and say, well, nobody else does it, so we should or shouldn't do it. It's a way to make sure that our employees understand benefits and come to work here. I also want to remind everyone that we do a great deal in our municipality to attract good officers, while other officers, while other departments are having trouble attracting good officers. How they're treated and how they're, we are concerned for them and benefit package has led to a very, the ability to attract officers, not only new entry officers, but lateral officers to come to work for us. So as much as we understand, you know, we sit here and we understand that public service employees do work and they serve the public, I want to reiterate how important it is that when we go to the tax office, that we're met with pleasant tax collectors, an assessor who works with the public, and the seniors who have an issue, and that's important to the public also. So I just wanted to say that. As a first selectman, part of my job is job retention, retaining people. There have been complaints. People in the past have said morale was bad. We have a problem. I would venture to say that morale is pretty good in most of our municipality, and we're, and I'm proud of that. So, yeah, do we do, are we a little progressive on some other stuff? Yes. And employee morale is important. Nobody wants to be met at a wall that says, "I am sorry. I am, on lunch break, I have to say, stop." Most of our employees and most of our staff will always take the minute to work with the public, because they do have a good morale. That being said, you know, the four-day work week in town hall, I think, is also working well for the evening hours working. But it is pretty evident that the senior center should be open till 1:00, as it was on Friday morning. And again, I think us asking the Board of Finance and to fund this floater position, who, the primary thing is to make sure there is staff available on Fridays till 1:00, so the senior center can be open, and work out more programs at that time, would work well. And it would work well for everyone, I think. Ann?
So first, I want to say thank you to everyone that came this meeting, last meeting. It really makes a difference. All the people that reached out to me, that wrote letters. It really makes me feel good that you, and your opinion matters. So I read every single letter. I responded to everybody. This is wonderful. This makes me so happy to see people engaged. My next comment is, if we bring the senior center back to five days, and you don't bring the town hall back to five days, is there going to be a strife there? Do we have to be careful that?
No, there's no issue.
There isn't?
No.
So just for bringing one back doesn't, so, okay. That's my comment. And Lauren?
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. No, thank you.
You're so polite here. I'd echo everything Selectman Arvino just said. Very often, especially, you know, during campaign season a lot, when you're knocking on doors and talking to folks, asking them to get involved, very often, there, a lot of people feel that government in general, and local government, is apathetic to your needs, doesn't really care, you know, you're not part of the solution. I think you folks, especially the number of you who have taken up residence here over the past couple months and joining us with each meeting, have shown that that's, in fact, the opposite. If you come out and you make your voices heard, knuckleheads like us listen. So we're glad that we had the opportunity to do that. And like I said in the beginning, I think we learned a lot in this pilot program. A lot of the things that were said today from the podium hit the nail on the head. You know, Francesca had mentioned, you know, the need that, to kind of, you know, take a look at the senior center as the asset that it is. And I believe that this is the first step, and I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, to really investing in that asset. I would love to see it open even later. We had a couple people talk about, hey, I'm still at work, sorry. You know, it would be nice, you know, not September 1, but eventually to be like, oh, we have a program for you at 7:30 or something like that. Again, we're not there. But this building and the programs that it offers should be something the town, I think, really leverages and kind of leans into. So I look forward to those next conversations. A number of you had mentioned the staff, and I'm glad you did. I think, to a degree, and it's probably our fault, they were put in an unfair position. You know, they didn't threaten to go on strike if they don't get three days off. None of that happened. We said, hey, we're trying something, and they kind of had to follow. So I think they tried to do their darndest to work within the parameters that we put in them. And in the conversations I've had with them, and as the first selectman mentioned, I'm the liaison over there, so I'm there a fair amount. All they want to do is serve, and whatever we allow them to do, they're going to try to make the most robust programs and make sure you guys have, all the members have something to do that fits your schedules, fits your needs, fits your hopes. So I want to make sure that, if any of them are watching, that they understand that they're not the bad guy here. They are incredible town employees who have nothing but the best interest for our seniors in mind first, and all they want to do when they come in in the morning is help. So I look forward to kind of getting back to that world now that we're heading that way. And I, I've been in government, you know, probably longer than I should have been. It's very rare that we get to come up with a solution that kind of makes almost everybody happy. So congratulations on being part of that. So I'm glad that there was such agreement tonight, that, you know, this path with the floater over the senior center and the appreciation for the extended hours, both here and there, was echoed from the podium, because sometimes we come with ideas. podium, because sometimes we come with ideas we think are great, and we don't hear it coming back. So I personally thought it was very eye-opening to me. And I appreciate, again, you guys coming out and letting us know that, at least in this one situation, we might have done something okay. So thank you very much for that.
Jason said, really, the three things that I wanted to get out there. One, this really was an opportunity to find some solution that solved multiple problems and made everybody happy. And I think that this has the potential to do that. Of course, we've still got to make it happen. But I think it really is a solution that gets everybody what they need. Two, I'm also very glad that he mentioned the relationship with the staff there, because I really do think that they are trying to do a very tremendous job. And I hope that there's an understanding that this wasn't something that they asked for, that this was something that the town tried. And I think that repairing that relationship, I think that'll come quickly. But recognizing that they are tasked with a tremendous job over there, and they're very enthusiastic about doing it, I'm very grateful for them. And then the third point that I wanted to make was, it is so great to hear from everybody in person, because one of the most frustrating things for me is sometimes conversations happen maybe out on social media, but they don't make its way to us. And I think that this was a perfect example of people coming directly to us and telling us what we needed to hear, so that we could actually address it head-on. One of the things that I've said in the two terms that I've been in here is to please come and engage with us directly. And I thank all of you for doing that, because this just goes to show how powerful that can be when the conversation is happening directly and not out in an abyss that we can't directly engage with. So I appreciate everybody's involvement. And I think that we've struck a good balance that I think is really going to be the solution that serves both the seniors as well as the staff. And I think we have a potential to make that happen really nicely.
Something I want to also bring up to the board that was talked about here, about seniors, and not just seniors, but the vulnerable in our population. I want to remind you that our social services, social service person, Mary, who does a wonderful job, has said the Wednesday late and later in the evening for social services has worked out quite well. There are people who are working, and they can't afford to take time off. So she has been able to take the time after, in later in the evening, and on Wednesdays, to serve those vulnerable people. I also know that was requested by Mary to start a grieving bereavement program that's been very successful. So there's been a number of, again, as I said, the reason for a pilot program, and it was pilot, wasn't this is what we're going to do, is at first, Mary said at first, she was not sure this was a really good idea. What she found was, it really worked well for social services and serving the vulnerable, which to me was a positive. So as we said, now that we have our legs under us about what this is, then can we have a win-win? And I think the Board of Finance would be receptive to this position being put in. It had started that we had one floater. It worked so well that we put a second floater in the budget. And in this last budget, there was, it was taken out. And I was disappointed, because I understood how important this position was, how we could make the flexibility work. And that schedule would be flexible. The good news about our staff is, when asked to be flexible, because of, I'll give a for instance, they had, the Senior Center had a pig roast, was sold out. It was one of our drivers who has a catering business. He was very generous to the Senior Center. And that was in the evening. And we made adjustments without having to say, nobody, the people did not say, no, I'm sorry. So it's important to keep the morale of our employees' willingness to be part of the team. And that's always been what you hear now, even in Public Works and policing. That's the word, is team. And it's important for the head coach to not always say, okay, but always say, you know, what is good for you also? What can we do that will make your life good? And frankly, I think the board will expect that, by doing that, that we get the same reciprocal reciprocation on what's good for, what's good for the people we serve. And that's important. So I also want to say that, you know, I was thinking when some people were speaking about evening poetry, which is wonderful. I want to remind everyone, just because you're a senior, there are activities at the library, that the library puts on, and people, and promoting the library. I haven't officially announced it yet, but it's coming out, that we will be reopening the library two months ahead of schedule, September 2. So if people are wondering what we do here in Town Hall...
That's worth clapping for.
You know, I get beat up pretty much for a lot of things I ask to try or see. I want the public to understand why this got done two months ahead of schedule. That was because of your Public Works staff, your Board of, your Finance Director. They were the people who said, what do we need to get this ahead of schedule? It is extremely important to me that our employee morale, that's what gets things done. And they have come through and come through. And if you notice, the pool was under budget on time, and that was Public Works, they could have said, oh, they are a team effort. So let's recognize the importance of what we do with our employees. That being said, I, I'm thinking that the Board of Selectmen, I would entertain a motion from someone to, if, to lobby the Board of Finance to, because it's going to, you know, Justin, it takes some movement in the budget to get, and the Board of Finance controls that, rightfully so, to reinstate this position of floater, so that we can keep the Senior Center operating on Friday till one o'clock.
Jeff, would you, would you dedicate the floater to the Senior Center?
It would be so that, it would be, there's not a need for a 35-hour-a-week at the Senior Center. But it would be, yes, that's what I'm committing to, is that the floater work is under me. Let me back that up. I'm looking for the flexibility. The floater would be available, would be there to keep the Senior Center open. That doesn't mean that there might not be someone else besides that individual. But that's, yes, that's for Friday morning, or Friday in the morning, yes.
Okay. As long as it's open on Friday?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we'd be really dumb to...
So I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have something.
Well, let's make, let's make the motion. So the motion is to...
I think the motion would be to recommend to the Board of Finance the creation or recreation of a floater position at 35 hours a week, with the primary responsibility to service the Senior Center, to extend its hours back to Fridays, supplement the later evenings as needed, and then to fulfill duties as determined by the first electman.
It was seconded.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ann?
I just want to make sure that I know how things, they all take time. I understand that. But if we can decide on what this kind of position is, who the person's going to be, and get it approved by the Board of Finance on the fast track, just so that September 2 is coming for the end of the pilot program, I just don't want to see a long delay.
So it's going to take a little time.
If we can have a special meeting, if we can get it moved faster.
It'll end up, you'll see it come in on a consent agenda. But it's going to take a little bit of time. The Board of Finance is back in September working, so that's good. We will, I will task the Finance Director to have that financially ready for them of what it's going to take, where the money is, what we could do. And from there, we would have to then go out to hire. We would have to advertise it. We would have to interview people. It's going to take a little, we have to interview, we moved along. The focus of the interviews will be on the community, the community, let's just say, the community building for the public. And it's not, if it was a floater for, if it was, if it was somebody we were going to focus on land use, it would be a different interview process, if you will. So we'd be looking for someone who's a little more engaged with the...
Okay. So my other question is, the pilot program ends on September 2, I believe? Is that correct?
At this point, if the idea is to extend the hours, we'd ask for the patience, for patience from the community to get, because what's going to happen is, you're going to have to stop, you don't want to stop the programs that have been extended in the evening now, and then have to start it back.
Well, what I don't want to happen is that there's a misunderstanding here. It ends on September 2, so that means we won't be open five days right away. So I just want everyone here that's dreaming, I want them to understand. If it ends on the 2nd, when will the Fridays come back? When will the transportation come back?
As soon as we get someone hired.
We have to, we have to publicly post the job. Like, there's rules around how we hire town employees.
Or the evening programs could be dismissed, and then the Fridays could start. So there has to be some kind of discussion on that as well.
But that's going to take time if there's instructors...
So is it two months? Is it three months?
I probably would...
But we should keep the public updated on when the Fridays will come back.
Yeah, I would say probably by Board of Finance, if they approve it, probably a month, a month and a half, probably, go through the process.
The other, the other problem I see here is the Park and Rec Department. They're on a five-day work program right now through the summer, so I don't see them going to a four-day work program. How is that going to work?
They'll stay on their five day because of their programming. Yes. I mean, we'll review it as we go along, and maybe we have enough, we'll see how that goes. But reinstating will give us the flexibility to serve the public with greater programs. Anyway, so I will...
I'm a little confused. If the pilot program ends September 2, which is a Tuesday, are we open again for half a day in this building and the Senior Center on Friday, September 5?
No, we're going to continue with the, with the, what we're doing right now with the Senior Center and the Town Hall. When we hire, get this floater hired, as long as the Board of Finance, it shouldn't be a problem, the Board of Finance...
So are we going to vote on extending the pilot program, or is that outside of the Board of Selectmen's purview?
It is actually outside the Board of Selectmen, but I would take suggestion, I'm suggesting that we continue with the four-day work week as we are, continue the evening programs, because it's been successful. And we also have social services working later, which has been successful. You're going to have an impact to the people that they are serving. And then get this new person on board, and then be open on, Senior Center on Friday.
All right. Well, I mean, let me be clear that I am not in favor of the four-day work week. I think we should go back to the four-and-a-half-day work week. And I think people should figure out how to move folks around, whether they get a half-day Monday, Wednesday, to keep both buildings completely open on a half-day on Friday. Just so everybody's clear.
Part of the problem with...
That's my, that's my take.
Part of the problem with staffing is, if, if you're short-staffed on Monday, because people aren't, there's someone that's not there on Monday, but they are on Friday, you don't have enough capacity in the department to run the program. So by doing this, we will have that capacity.
Again, I'm for the four-and-a-half-day work week, as we had it before this summer. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I would hate to lose the evening hours. I think it, the evening hour is serving the folks who need to be able to do things after 5 o'clock, I think has been tremendously successful. And I want to see that continue. And I, I have every confidence that hiring the right person, I think there's twofold. One, I think it needs to happen quickly. But I think we want to make sure we hire the right person. And I have, I have confidence that this is a priority, because I think there's not a single person in this building that's missed how important a conversation this is. But we do have some rules to follow as far as publicly posting the position, sourcing the position, and hiring. We want to make sure we do it the right way and get the right person. But I have, I have no concerns that anybody's going to be dragging their feet on this.
It was my understanding that when the pilot program, when a pilot program ends, it ends. They were able to get a schedule together for a four-day week, work week. So why wouldn't they be able to get the regular schedule back in order September 2? So now the seniors have to wait longer to have their transportation on Friday. So if a pilot program's over, it's over.
We're covering, we are covering all the transportation is being covered.
On Friday.
All the needs for transportation of the seniors, and the shopping, and the doctor's appointments are currently in place and working.
They're not covering on Friday, and that's 70% of transportation for seniors.
They have, so now you have to start all over again. I would rather get the person in place and then extend that. Because it's going to be very disruptive to go back and it is going to...
And it wasn't disruptive to get to this point?
Well, it took a number of months. Remember, this was announced in April.
But the easier thing to do would be to have a flex schedule with, with people filling in that are already in that department. And then you're not adding $35 a week. You're not looking for Board of Finance. You have it covered.
Under that scenario, you're right, Tim. But then we're not investing more. Then we're just back to the old way. If we do it that way, and just rotate people around, there's not enough total man-hours in the department to both handle Friday, which is important, and the extended hours, which we've heard from a different segment, is just as important. This solution takes care of both of those. Is it more cumbersome, and it takes more time? Yes, because we have to hire a new headcount. But that's the, that's the process that solves both of those problems. There is a way to juggle things around and flex it, but you would never have the total coverage to still solve both of those problems.
I agree with you. And that's what Andrea, the Senior Center Director, said. She's understaffed. So when she's saying she's understaffed, we need to staff it.
Which is exactly what I said earlier, where I thought that this is the first step of reinvesting into the Senior Center, where next year, the year after, we have 7:30. We're in agreement there. We have to kind of get through this first step to get to the second and third step.
Again, they're not staffed properly, and the transportation on Fridays isn't there for the seniors. So that's very concerning.
But we operate under a budget, and the budget is set and voted on. We are literally taking a vote to allocate funds, to bring in more headcount. That's what we're doing. We can't just say, hire another person. It's not in the budget. But this solution is something that we can ask the Board of Finance to do, so that it's expedient, and we get that headcount going. I'm a little confused about the ask to just make it happen. We have rules and processes. We have to go through the Board of Finance. We don't have an alternative. That's how this municipality works. The Board of Finance is a separate body that controls the money. We are voting right now to go to them to invest money for headcount that would service the Senior Center, and I...
For a floater for 35 hours a week. I understand that.
Right. But I'm confused about your statement just now, that they're, well, they're understaffed.
Our senior director says she's understaffed.
And we're looking to...
That's what she said when she was before the Board of Selectmen.
And we're looking to add that staff right now.
So I think we're trying to do what you want.
You're not, but you're not dedicating it completely to the Senior Center.
We're dedicating it for the hours she's requesting now. But as like I said, this is, could be a first step. I would love to give them a new full-time person right now, but that's not in the budget. I'm not sure if we can get that through the Board of Finance. So if we're solving a problem today, this, I believe, is the best solution... So if we're solving a problem today, this, I believe, is the best solution to take care of all the people who have voiced an opinion about the senior center. Is it the best long-term solution? I'm not pretending it is. But this is the fastest way to get Fridays covered and keep the extended hours during the week.
And a reminder that the program has served more of the senior population. So that, we, we're actually going to actually expand the, the services at the senior center with more hours, and there'll be more staff. So it's a win-win for both. Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor of lobbying the Board of Finance for the floater position with the intent of having the senior center staffed on Friday till 1:00. Signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It carries. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Feel free to stay. You guys don't got to run away.
Come on. Announcements and correspondence are in front of you. You have your reports given the hour. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Jeff.
Can I have a second?
Second, I have a question. Why are we being presented with the youth officer job description? Thank you.
Let's revisit.
Where? There's nothing redlined on it.
On the top, you can see revised. I have a question myself.
I get that, but, but what got, what got revised? I don't have the old one? It's not redlined?
I can tell you what that was. It, it's, it's revised so they can also go on patrol. If they need to go on patrol, they can go on patrol. That's all.
The charter revision stuff was redlined. It's helpful, any of this stuff. Redline. Thank you.
No, we're in a board meeting, please. We're in a board meeting. Okay. All in favor, it's been made and seconded. All in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? It carries. Minutes of July 17th, 2025, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, please. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anybody opposed?
I abstain.
You abstain? Justin abstains. Bids and procurements, Chestnut, Tree Hill Road, Milling and Paving. You have the memo in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
You have a second?
Yep.
Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? And it carries. Charter revision? Betsy, do we have?
We got Joe here, too, if you want him.
I think we have a, a resolution. Resolved that the Southbury Board of Selectmen hereby approves the charter, the Southbury Town Charter as revised by the Charter Commission and submitted by the Town Clerk on July 30th, 2025, with the removal of the recommendation to combine planning and zoning commission. I would suggest someone would make that motion.
I'll make the motion, but I would like some discussion.
Can I have a second? Was made and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Please. So to catch up, the four people watching at home. So charter vision, and the chairman's here if he wants. Our last meeting, we sent back to charter revision the draft asking to remove the planning and zoning combination. Charter revision met and added it back into the final. And I just want to walk you through the process there. So in the charter revision meeting, with Ann and I are both on, the group kind of determined that, you know, having worked with the document for a year and heard from pretty much all the sides in the process, we understood that it was the Board of Selectmen's interest to not include it. We re-included it back in the final with the thought process being that, is it the worst thing that the voters get a crack on it? I said in this meeting last time, and I said in that planning meeting, or the, wrong, wrong commission, the charter revision meeting two weeks ago, I think the public probably shoots it down, but none of us saw the harm in presenting it, which is why it came back in the final.
Okay.
So. So I was going to make a motion to amend the resolution to strike the line with the removal of the recommendation to combine planning and zoning commissions.
I'll second that. So I missed the last meeting, but I did read the minutes, and I read the minutes of your last charter revision meeting. The reality is, is that two town committees charged with looking at the future of this town, the Strategic Planning Commission and the Charter Revision Commission, have recommended this merger. And a relatively small group of people in, in town and our committees have decided that's not going to be. I think it's for the town, I think it's for the town people and the voters to decide this. I respect the members of the Planning and Zoning Commissions, and I respect their opinions. The reality is, people don't like change, and that's true of our volunteers. It's true of our townspeople. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't truly find out what the town wants. The current, you can make an argument that our current systems, because they're so slow, are literally taking some of people's liberty from them, about how they use their land, even when it's permitted. So I would like to see this go before the voters. I trust them to make the right decision, and it's certainly been done in plenty of other towns. More towns than have a four-day work week, that's for sure.
So the motion to amend, this has been made and seconded. There is a discussion on amending that. Is there anybody else that would like to talk about that, that motion?
Justin on that. I mean, I think it should go before the townspeople. We had it on there originally. Should stay on there.
So what I'm hearing is that the Board of Selectmen would want it to be a question on the ballot to the people. Shall the. So that, to amend it, to take, to, because if, 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 this, we have to, we have to, I'm trying to make sure we do this correct. If we vote to approve the amendment to pull that, the resolution would be resolved that the Southbury Board of Selectmen hereby approves, excuse me, the Town Charter as revised by the Charter Revision Commission and submitted to the Town Clerk, that would then include, let me get this right, that would include combining, but we would have to have the question on the ballot. I want to make sure we're not, not, we're precluding ourselves from, from putting it on the ballot. I want to make sure that it would become the question on the ballot, and should it be approved, it should, it should be voted down to combining, that that will happen. You know, you see what I'm saying?
You lost me at the very end, but I, I think I followed you. So if the amendment passes to strike that language, we put a period at the end of 2025, which is essentially we approve the final version from the Charter Revision Commission. What we would then have to do, because it doesn't look like the attorney created it yet, a new question specific to something along the lines, shall the town of Southbury combine its planning and zoning commissions? It would be its own standalone question on the ballot. Then the people could say yes or no, and then that happens. It doesn't stop us from doing.
So I would, if that is what we're going to do, then we should, I think at this meeting, create that question here in this room now.
Doesn't have to create that question.
No, they review, they review it. Go ahead, Joe. Yes, please. We're, we're trying to make sure procedurally we don't put ourselves in a.
I think procedurally, what Jason said is you put the period after 2020, 25, strike the rest. That accepts the agreement. However, the attorney also determined that one of the other questions we were proposing was illegal. The finance ordinance override. So you may want to say.
And that's why you're the chairman, Joe. So I would make a motion to amend my motion to.
I'm trying to keep it all on track.
No, I'm glad. Strike the language, removing the recommendation to combine planning and zoning, and omit the language deemed inappropriate by the town attorney, which I don't all remember off the top of my head. It was the, it was the ordinance, Board of Finance ordinance. Was that 709, Joe?
Don't, don't step away, Joe.
I was getting comfortable. So, yeah, or you could just say with the removal of the finance ordinance override. You could say that, too. It's however you want to do that. But he, the town attorney determined that that would not stand up to state statutes, so.
All right, so we'll start from the beginning. My amendment, my motion to amend is that it should say, resolve that the Southbury Board of Selectmen hereby approves the Southbury Town Charter as revised by the Charter Revision Commission and submitted to the Town Clerk on July 30th, 2025, with the omission of the language for the.
Finance ordinance override.
Finance ordinance override.
Alternative, sorry, alternative.
Okay. Should we reference a section?
709.
709.
Yeah, that's, just for the record, 709. Okay. So do we have a second on that amendment to the motion? Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Please, no.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? And that is approved, I think. So we're good.
If I could have a moment of, for a point of personal privilege, as we are now done with the Charter Revision Commission. And I don't want to speak for Selectman Arminio, but I know she probably shares my feelings. It was an honor to serve with Joe and all the members. Getting to see you two, three times a month for two hours at a time was a joy. And if, if I get a couple of days off from reading the charter, I'll be excited. And while I got this minute, the members of the commission, again, were Chairman Joe Roggerio and Michael Carrington, Joan King, Richard Lynch, Tom Marks, John Riley, and Kathy Smith. They all put in incredible amount of work and hours and thanked them for, for putting together this document.
I, I, I will tell you, you know, having been here 10 years, charter revision is, is a dreaded thing. I think I'd rather do, rather do the plan of conservation and development.
I'd do that, too.
But the effort that goes into these, to doing this, and staying within the guidelines of, legal guidelines, is, is a big undertaking. And you're throwing together many different people, and, and the public, too, much like board meetings here. So thank the group for, for, for doing what they've done, and thank you for being on there. Oh, it's. This is, this is the bible of how we work in government here. I mean, planning conservation and development is one thing, but the charter is really what spells it out. So that passed. Southbury Charter questions. One question that'll be on, we would, are looking to put on the ballot, shall the Section 202.8 and 301 of the charter be amended to provide that the first selectman shall, beginning with the 2027 election, be elected for a term of four years? Second is the shall, Section 301 of the charter be amended to remove the language that permitted an unsuccessful candidate for the first selectman to be considered for a position on the Board of Selectmen? Three, shall the charter be otherwise amended as recommended by the Charter Revision Commission as approved by the Board of Selectmen as published and posted on the Town of Southbury website? We also would ask that, the question about the combining, shall the, shall the Planning and Zoning Commission be combined? Or.
I, I can probably whip one up if we want to keep it in the same format. Question four would be, shall Section 202 of the charter be amended to combine the Planning and Zoning Commissions?
You're great.
Joe teed me up.
That would be a fourth. I, I would say that should be the third question. I don't, just do it as a fourth question?
I don't know. I don't know if we determine ballot order, but I guess if we, whatever we send them, they're probably going to do it in that order. So I would agree that number three, kind of that catch-all, should probably be the last one.
Yes, I think so. So we'll, we'll put them in that order. Okay. I'll entertain a motion that these be the four questions that will be on the ballot.
So moved.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Is anyone opposed? And that carries. Thank you. Well, that was easy, Joe. That was easy.
That was easy a year later.
Okay. Any new business before us? I don't think so. We have.
There's no new business, Jeff, but.
I'm sorry?
There is no new business on here, but I did email to try to get on the agenda for tonight, the New Wheeler Road bike, bike path.
I can, I can discuss that in my Selectmen's report.
Oh, you are, okay, good.
Yeah, I got, I got some stuff for you.
Excellent.
Okay. No new business for Selectmen's report. Now, let me start with the Southbury, the Connecticut State Bond Commission approved $350,000 in state funding to assist with flood repairs and restoration of the Southbury Public Library. The allocation was approved unanimously at an August 1st, 2025 special commission meeting in Hartford. This additional grant will cover the balance of the cost after FEMA reimbursement. I would like to recognize and thank State Representative Jason Buxbaum, State Representative Arnie Jensen, State Senator Eric Berthel, for your support and advocacy at the state level for this funding. Also, Southbury Animal Control has upgraded their computer software, more technology, systems from Microsoft Access to ComK, a specialized animal control software. The use of ComK enables animal control officers to complete and print their reports, notices, and quarantine paperwork on the road. ACO Kristen Seedor said it will allow more of their time to be spent in the field, which means shorter response times and more interaction with the residents. On July 31st, 2025, I met with Danielle Walker, Southbury's dedicated coordinator from the Conference, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities for our annual meeting. Southbury utilizes many of our CCM membership benefits, such as employees' continuing education and professional development, and online job boards specifically for Connecticut municipal job postings, low-cost printing services, advocacy on state and local levels, and so much more. CCM recently launched a program dedicated to women in government. My assistant, Bonnie Rado, is a member of the eight-person Women in Government Advisory Board who work together to provide webinars, a monthly newsletter, and an annual Women in Government Summit. This year's summit attracted over 200 attendees. The mission of this, of CCM Women in Government is to empower women to lead with confidence and effectiveness in their professional and personal lives. I am pleased to have Southbury represented in this important initiative. I am pleased to have Southbury represented in this important initiative. I just want to make a comment about that. When we talk about floaters, Bonnie Redo started with us as a floater, became a floater up in Land Juice, and then pivoted to assistant, my assistant. And again, the knowledge that a floater brings to, with the various departments is, is invaluable. And also, I'm very proud to say that she is representing Southbury, and Southbury is becoming recognized by a lot of CCM and a lot of other organizations for who we are. The Senior Center partnered with Animal Control and Veterinary Care Everywhere to host a new low-cost veterinary wellness clinic for seniors and veterans on Friday, July 18th. The wellness clinic helped provide essential exams and vaccines, ensuring every pet gets the care they deserve to stay healthy. DCE will be returning for a wellness clinic in January. Again, it was a Friday, it was on July 8th, 18th, and it was in the, and it was done by our Senior Center. Last week, Southbury town campers had the unique opportunity to explore fire trucks, police cars, and construction vehicles, thanks to the collaboration of various town departments, which include Park and Recreation, Fire Department, Fire Marshal, Police Department, Public Works, and Office of Emergency Management. Children not only love turning on sirens, climbing into trucks, and sitting in the driver's seat of emergency vehicles, they also learn about things like emergency preparedness, fire safety. Station Dog Luke, another first for Southbury, Station Dog Luke was there, and it was just as happy to participate as the campers were. And again, on Thursday, July 24th, from 4:30 to 6:30 on Fri, on Thursday, July 24th, the Senior Center held its first annual honk, honky-tonk barbecue. I was not around for it, I wish I could have been. It was a picture-perfect evening, spent outside with friends, eating great food, laughing, talking, and listening to live country music. Those who attended were impressed with the food, hospitality, and the music provided by the Honky Tonk Jones Band. Many joined in the spirit of the evening by dressing in Western-themed clothing, accented with a red bandana provided by the Senior Center. The Southern-style menu included roast pork, homemade mac and cheese, collard greens, hot dogs, cornbread, beans, sweet tea, and a variety of desserts. Thank you to the event sponsors, Lutheran Home of, of Southbury, Full Bloom Catering and WellCare. This is a very popular and sold-out event. We'll be back again next year, we hope to see you there. Again, this was put on lovingly. If you look, that is one, one of our drivers, and it was in a very affordable event. The gentleman who drives for us is very impressed, he's from Newtown, with our senior center and the flexibility and the fact that we were there till 6:30 on a Thursday. Tim, you were asking, there was a couple of things you were asking about. The Community Connectivity Grant, I'll have more information on the New Wheeler Road from our Public Works Director at the next meeting, a memo, because he's been extremely busy getting that library opened. The, the basics of it is, we did some engineering with SLR. It is a extremely challenging topography and extremely difficult to make it comply with all the regulations you have to do. We are looking to repurpose that grant at another connectivity area that we have on that plan. We're hoping to be able to get to do that. We were, you know, I, I will remind the board what happened with that. You know, we, we accepted the grant, and then the flood came, so it's been a little tied up with that. But the topography is just too, too, it's, it's just too steep to get it worked out, so we hope to use it in another area.
Yeah, no, I just, I think it's great that we got the $800,000 for it, but my question was, I don't believe that this was approved or even discussed with the Board of Selectmen. I've asked a number of times for those minutes, and, and I've asked Betsy for the minutes, and she can't find them. I think the discussion needs to be that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance do approve this, but I'm not in agreement on the New Wheeler Road as the best option for Southbury. So, protocol, I think we need to get that on the agenda and discussed and approved by Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance.
The Board of Finance did approve it.
Then, then if they did, please.
We'll send that to.
Provide me with the minutes so I can look them over, because I've asked about eight times now.
It was Board of Finance minutes, approval, 9/1624 on the Trails Grant. Ms. McNeil asked if there is a maintenance plan for the infrastruc, for the new infrastructure. Mr. Colton confirmed that the Public Works would be responsible for the maintenance. The specific details will be worked out as the project progresses. Mr. Riley moved, Mr. Connor seconded, and it was unanimously resolved that the Board of Finance approves the acceptance of the Trails Grant motion carried. You can look that up in the.
Okay.
You can go back to the Board of.
That's great, the Board of Finance did that. The Board of Selectmen also has to approve it.
Yeah, we have, we've.
Per our charter.
We, we've accepted the, the grant, the commitment to fund, and we've accepted the grant.
So let's get it on the agenda.
We can't use it here anyway, so we're going to have to, because we have to do the engineering, so.
Okay.
All right.
Couple other things, there were some people that did speak before on the state granting the SDS property land sales. I was hoping to get that on the agenda, too. There's two things that need to be done, the survey and also the impact survey. Hopefully, we can get that on the agenda and we can start moving on that.
Yeah, so now that things, the library's going to be open, we have, I have just gotten in all of the information from Pierce Hollow, which, there was an A2 survey, AIA Environmental Impact Study. That's all just come into my office from the attorney who was working on that, which will be a lot better with that base to know what it is. It's a little, there's, there's a lot of information there, and then, so if you're going to then go to do something, we also need to know that we, accepting that property, you can't, you, you need to clean it up. It's an environmental, it's a, probably a $1.5 million worth of environmental cleanup. So we cannot take title of it, or we're in, we are responsible for the $1.5 million to, to clean it up.
Yeah, I guess we could get some funds to be reimbursed, but it's good that, that's all coming in. That was actually what, what I really would like to have talked to on the agenda tonight. Couple other updates that I'm hoping that you may have. Town of Southbury did get a steep grant for the transfer station to rebuild the wall and do some improvements back in 2023.
They're working on that, yep.
Okay, we, we do have four years to get that accomplished.
Yep.
We're working on year two right now.
Yeah, there was a, they've been a little tied up last year.
And, and do you have any update, too, on the Oldfield Road Bridge, how that's coming?
I'll have that next meeting when they, it, I know it's on, it's on, I don't know the date, but it, in, in the top of my head, but it, there's, it's on schedule. We've always brought these projects in on time and on schedule. I think so. I don't know off the top of my head, and Blake has been out with some other stuff, so I'll have all that information in September.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's up next on the, who's the next, oh, there we go. I'm sorry. I am the Price is Right. I don't want to go out of order, so Selectman Arminio.
Well, so there was no library meeting, that was canceled, and LEAPAC's next week, EMS is next Tuesday, and that's, I have nothing.
Economic Development will next meet in September. Investment portfolio met last night. The, the three funds continue to do very well, and I did screenshot one of the slides that I thought was, was important. With the pension plan, we are now, well, as of July 1, 27 million and change, 89.6% funded. And as Chris, our representative from FIA notes, our actuarial assumption of six and a quarter is very conservative. There are towns that call themselves 90% funded that are at a 7.75% actuarial, and that's a huge difference. It doesn't sound big, but it is big. So we are doing very well in there. The library now has over $3 billion in their account. You know, putting that into professional management has generated an additional $1.8 million for our library. So certainly the right, the right plan when it happened. So that was that. Pool Oversight is going to meet after the season ends to see, you know, how the new pool held up, and that's it for me.
Yeah, we still, we're going, we're going to have a punch list on the pool, so I don't want to disband the Pool Oversight Committee until we know the punch list is completed. So I think that's part of what we'll do, is still oversee that to make sure that's, there's a couple of concrete pieces. I, you're right about the actuarial rate of return, we're very conservative on that rate of return. Just let me say this, the state of Connecticut is very liberal with their rate of return of, at one time, eight or nine. It was, that's part of what got the state of Connecticut is, and my understanding is the actuaries, the actuaries were not happy and they, they wouldn't, and that's why they went to a new firm. We're realistic about what we're doing with our pensions and what it is, and, and again, the municipality, we funded the pensions, we do the correct thing with the conservative actuarial rate of return, and so we're, we're, the Board of Finance has done, and IPAC has done a fantastic job, the talent. The board should sometime go and sit in an IPAC meeting. Absolutely incredible what these people do and what they're, how they think. I, I can't, you know, they, it's, it's unbelievable. Thank you, Justin. Selectman O'Neill.
Conservation Commission last met June 26th, Park and Rec meets tonight, Community Relations Task Force. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to meet for the last few times that they had meetings scheduled. The Park, the Pomperog Liaison, Pomperog High School Liaison, Stevie Bennett, has moved along, and unfortunately, we've gotten the resignation of Terry Sullivan, Colette Mambo. I do want to say thank you to Stevie Bennett, Terry Sullivan, Colette Mambo, Reverend Sean Garrigan, for what they have done. I think the Community Relations Task Force was started back in April of 2021. I think it's an important for our community to know that the town promotes the acceptance of all members of the Southbury community and focuses on advancing the understanding of our diverse and multicultural makeup of our citizens. And again, thank you to all that formed this committee, and hopefully it could be reinstated.
I'm getting a message that I have to get rid of the snake in the chicken coop when I go home. Selectman Sullivan.
Region 15 has not resumed yet, but they will be back September 8th, and you can feel the energy brewing that schools are about to start, so.
Jason.
As I wipe a tear from my eye, noticing the charter revision is no longer in my list of assignments, I report that neither the Senior Commission nor the Energy Task Force has met since our last meeting.
Very good. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? Seconded, thank you. All in favor, aye, and we are adjourned. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.